Sheriff Kenny Christopher.
Oh, Benton County County Commissioner. That's how I say it.
Charles Cooper, will you give the pledge? I mean, the prayer.
Father God, we just ask you, Lord, to be upon this meeting. Father God, be amongst us, Father, and lead, guide, and direct us as we go about the people's business, Father God, of the right decisions to be made, Father God. And just let everyone be protected and safe, Father God. Let us have the welfare of our citizens in mind, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Jerry Cross, prayers please.
I plead with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, Roseanne couldn't be with us, and Darryl was, Prothean couldn't be with us, so Kathy Howell will do roll call.
Roll call can be done on both.
Yeah.
Keith Arnold.
Uh, sorry. Everybody use your tablets on that. We're only gonna do the roll call for the chairman. Sorry. Is it done?
They're doing roll call.
Yeah, but they can do it all.
Dean Soaks. Sonny Hall. Mike Nunnery. Roseanne Ward. Darryl Hicks. Terry Keen.
It's got Jerry.
Got Jerry.
Jerry's here.
It's not you, it's. We have twelve present, six absent. We have a quorum. Okay, tonight, since she can't be here, we're gonna vote on a temporary chairman for the night only. And I'd like to see who, who would you like to? Mr. Miller?
Mark Ward.
Mark Ward? Thank you. Anyone else?
Anybody want to change their vote?
Nobody else to the floor? I don't like this seat, sorry. Roseanne can't miss. All in favor? Mark? Thank you.
I'm not my.
So, the first thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda. We have a motion and a second for that. It's already voted, so what do you do? All right, we got a first, a motion and a second, so all in favor, go ahead and vote. Oh, it's a voice vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? So, that passed. We'll move on to the citizens forum, which we have no one who has requested to speak in the citizens forum. So, we'll move right along to the commissioners forum. Uh, any of the commissioners have anything they wanna address the board with? Ms. Bain?
Um, in my own favor, y'all can give me some attention.
Yeah.
At the last month's meeting, I gave a contract which highly upset me. What upset me was the fact that $200,000 of taxpayer dollars is planned to pay for an AstroTurf football field. Not only as a commissioner, but also as a citizen, this concerns me. And in my opinion, it's way beyond ridiculous. I realize that this is, this may be completed or almost done, but there are so many things that that money could go toward, like security for the children. In light of what happened in Nashville and also in Henry County just recently, to leave the schoolchildren without adequate protection is unconscionable. But what is worse, I went home and Googled about AstroTurf from rubber, which brought up many pages about the health risks. I, of course, did not print them all out because there was too many. AstroTurf causes indulation, ingestion, skin contact diseases, and also a few forms of cancer, mostly non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. NBC and CBS has done studies on the health issues from AstroTurf. Even the CDC has recommended that children not play sports on these types of fields due to health risks. The carcinogens found in AstroTurf are as follows: benzene, carbon black, lead, mercury, arsenic, heavy metals, polycycline aromatic hydrocarbons. Deion Sanders played football for Dallas, Atlanta, and Baltimore. They all had AstroTurf. He developed a condition called Turftoe, which is 70% more likely to occur on AstroTurf. He had to have a few toes removed and consequently had several other health issues, like blood clots after that. Baltimore has since removed AstroTurf and went back to grass, which is free, and children have been playing on it for centuries. AstroTurf is even making lawyers rich, like Monsanto. When your child gets sick, they're ready to sue. I suggest that everyone do some research on this and decide whether this risk to the children's health is worth taking. And I, I'm speaking this because I understand that this is gonna be talked about in committees and stuff, and I just wanted to make y'all aware of the different health risks. And I've got some papers here that I can give to Mayor, uh, that I, a few, very few, that I pulled up concerning this subject that he can look at, and y'all can look it up for yourself. I mean, uh, our, our children are a precious resource, and, and if they're gonna get cancer from playing on this stuff, being tackled, rolling around in it, I, I don't know that it's a good thing. It's my opinion. I'm a citizen, I have a right to my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Bain. Uh, you do understand that the AstroTurf has already been in.
I understand that.
Okay. Uh, do you want me to give this out to all the commissioners?
If you would like to make copy, she can. That's the only one that I made.
I'd be glad to do that. Any other commissioners have anything to say?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna give you a little report. This weekend, we had our 65th Annual Bluegrass Pudders Candy Arena, and it was a huge success. I wanna thank all of the people in the county that helped us do it. Uh, we've had probably the biggest crowd we've had in years. The TRRD Board helped fund that. Tourism, we had people from Kentucky, Alabama, of course, Tennessee, most of our contestants came. Some from Jackson, most of them from Middle Tennessee, East Tennessee, and Kentucky, and Alabama. Uh, we had guests there from Germany. We had a couple there from England, Michigan, Illinois, uh, and, uh, two or three of those other states where he's told at. I think I followed. But we had a huge crowd. Uh, we had eighty-five something shoulders that were barbecued, and I think the American desk and some commissioners had their barbecue.
Yeah, it was amazing.
Uh, I wanna thank Sheriff Department, Sheriff Christopher, for helping with our security, for helping getting the rain lined up, blocking traffic. Uh, we didn't have any incidents, anything, problems, and it was just a great weekend. And maybe next year, for those that did not have an opportunity to come, come next year and help support it. It was a great weekend, Rob.
I agree a hundred percent. It was a great, great show.
George said, Mayor, but.
Any other commissioners have any, anything they wanna say? We'll, we'll move on to number four. Um, Mr. Attorney, do you have anything to?
No.
Well, the mayor don't either. So, so we'll just move on to the preview, uh, approval of last month's minutes. Can I get a motion and a second to approve those?
Motion by Keith Arnold, second by Bill Milton. Ready for vote? Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
Thank you. Uh, reported public utilities, that's included in your packet. I don't think we have anybody here with utilities tonight, so we'll just move on to the resolutions. Do y'all have to approve the, uh, public? All right, we'll need a motion and a second on the, uh, public utilities minutes.
Keith Arnold, motion. Bill Milton, second. Anyone? Very far. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, we're out of our groove a little. I've never done this before. This is the last place I really wanna be during a commission meeting, so y'all just bear with me. So, we'll move on to, uh, our resolutions. Resolution number one.
Motion by Keith Arnold, second by Bill Milton.
It's a re- a resolution to appoint Tyler Goodwin to fill a vacancy on the animal shelter board. We have a motion and a second, so all, without any discussion, anybody have any discussion? Y'all can go ahead and vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Twelve yes, motion carries.
Resolution number two is from, uh, Director of Schools, Mark Florence. Is to make some changes within his current school budget. Can I get a motion and a second on resolution number two?
Motion by Bill Milton, second by Marty Douglas. Session. All voting. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
That motion carried. We'll move on to resolution number three. This is a resolution from the Director of Schools, Mark Florence. Is to make changes within the current school's budget in accordance with the reimbursement received from Tennessee Risk Management. Need to get a motion and a second, bring it on the floor.
Motion, very far, second by Bill Milton.
Any discussion on this resolution? If not, we'll go ahead and vote.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
Resolution number four, Director of Schools, Mark Florence. Is to make changes within his current school budget to cover a shortfall and some line items for subsidiary, subsidiary expenditures. I need to get a motion and a second, bring this on the floor.
Motion by Marty Douglas, second by Bill Milton.
Any questions on this or discussion? If not, please vote.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
So, resolution number five is a resolution by the Director of School, Mark Florence, to appropriate funds in the amount of $43,000 to the school's budget to cover a shortfall in food service equipment. Can I get a motion and a second to bring this on the floor?
Bill Milton, motion. Jerry Cross, second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
So, resolution number six, uh, sponsored by Road Supervisor Barry Carter. Uh, Benton County Road Supervisor Barry Carter to move funds in the amount of $11,000 within the Highway Department's budget for needed upgrades to software. Can I get a motion and a second to bring it on the floor?
Keith Arnold, motion. Jerry Cross, second.
Any discussion or questions? Please vote.
Jerry Cross. Anyone wish to change your vote? Twelve yes, motion carries.
Resolution number seven is sponsored by Road Supervisor Barry Carter. Resolution by Benton County Road Supervisor Barry Carter to move funds in the amount of $650 within the Highway Department's budget to set up a new line item for funding of any classes and/or conferences that have previously been paid out of a different line item. Uh, can I get a motion and a second to bring that on the floor?
Bill Milton, motion. Any questions?
Any questions for this? If not, please vote.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
Resolution number eight is a resolution, uh, sponsored by the Benton County Mayor, Mark Ward, to budget funds in the amount of $6,070 and 22 cents received from insurance recovery to put it in building maintenance and repair. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion, Duane Fowler, second, Bill Milton.
Any questions? If not, please vote.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
Resolution number nine is a resolution by Benton County Mayor, Mark Ward, to declare a printer in possession of the Benton County Mayor's office as surplus property for the purpose of public sale or disposal. Can I get a motion and a second to bring this on the floor?
Duane Fowler, motion. Marty Douglas, second.
Are there any questions? If not, please vote.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
Uh, resolution number 10 is a resolution by Benton County Mayor, Mark Ward, to declare three county-owned vehicles in possession of the animal shelter as surplus property for the purpose of public sale. Uh, can I get a motion and a second to bring this on the floor?
Motion, Duane Fowler, second, Bill Milton.
Any questions on this? If not, please vote.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
Resolution number 11 is a resolution by Benton County Mayor, Mark Ward, to transfer possession and use of a county-owned vehicle to the animal shelter, animal control. Uh, can I get a motion and a second to bring this on the floor?
Motion, Duane Fowler, second, any questions?
Any discussion or questions? I, I would like for y'all to know that this is the extra truck that we have for our maintenance department, and it's not being used, so I thought it'd be a good thing since their vehicles went down to transfer that out there. Unfortunately, the transmission's out of it, so we're gonna have to spend $2,500, but the animal shelter has that in their budget, so we won't have to allocate any money for that. We'll transfer it to them, and then they'll get the repairs done and be able to use it, so please vote.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
Number 12 is a resolution by Benton County Mayor, Mark Ward, to move funds in the amount of $100,000 from the Tennessee River Resort District. It's their own unassigned fund balance to an expenditure line item within the TRRD budget. Can I get a motion and a second to bring this on the floor?
Mr. Nelson, do you have a?
Yeah.
Motion, Duane Fowler, second, Jerry Cross.
Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
Resolution number 13, sponsored by Benton County Mayor, Mark Ward. Uh, I'd like to withdraw this motion at this time, I mean, this resolution at this time. We'll vote on it in the next month or two. Resolution number 14 is a resolution by the Benton County Mayor, Mark Ward, to appropriate funds in the amount of $1,200 from the unassigned fund balance to the trustee's budget for attendance of business-related meetings. Uh, can I get a motion and a second?
Motion, Bill Milton, second, Ray Carter.
Any discussion on this? If not, please vote.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
Resolution number 15 is sponsored by the Benton County Sheriff, Kenny Christopher. A resolution by Sheriff Kenny Christopher to move funds in the amount of $12,000 from the drug control to various line items in the sheriff's budget. Uh, this was not voted on in, uh, Law Enforcement or Budget Committee. Just to let y'all know that information, but, uh, can I get a motion and a second to bring it on the floor?
Jerry Cross, motion. Keith Arnold, second.
Do we have any discussion on this, uh, particular resolution?
What is the other, the other charges? On this one, on this front here? Pre-spendier.
The other charges. What I want to do on this, if we can, we're in this. We're not gonna need to move all that money. All this is out of drug control money, and, uh, we're going to do, have to do some updating on cars. All of them, but we're not gonna do that. The only part that we really need is $2,000. And that would be for the animal food supply. If we can get that done tonight, then it'll carry us through when we have our shut-off date. We'll get personal things, or July one, that's just the food and supplies.
So, this is your resolu- this is your resolution? You're asking one of the board members to amend this to just be $2,000 for the? Okay.
You don't need to make this from the parent for vehicles?
Oh, sir, we won't be doing that. We're not gonna do that. We're trying to fix some cars for the dollar. Just, just the food and supplies. Also, we have, we need to, uh, call it one tracking dollar.
Brett Bens, go. Bring up the amendment.
Yeah, I'll bring up the amendment to do, as he said, $2,000, animal food supply.
We have a motion by Brett Bird to amend this at the sheriff's advice to $2,000 for animal, um, food and supplies, and also it would lower the drug control fund decrease to $2,000. Can I hear a second on that?
Uh, second with Keith on.
Okay.
We're typing it.
I got you. Any, uh?
Say that one more time, we'll go over.
We're amending, uh, 122.39000 drug control fund, uh, from $12,000 to $2,000 on the decrease, and the increase, uh, we're actually striking the 122.54150.338, and we're striking 122.54150.99. So, that would leave the $2,000 for animal food and supplies. We have a motion and a second on the amendment. Uh, can I get a vote on that?
Break the vote.
They still gonna hit us $12,000, and that's gonna use two of it.
Yeah.
It's, it's not hitting us at all, except the $2,000.
Just get two out of it.
Yeah.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
So, we've amended, uh, resolution number 15 to be $2,000 out of drug control fund, transferred to animal food and supply. I need a motion and a second to vote on it as amended.
Uh, motion.
Jerry Cross, make the motion amended.
Any more discussion on this vote? If not, please vote.
Jerry Parker. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, twelve yes. As a member.
Thank you. Uh, resolution 16, sponsored by Benton County Mayor, Mark Ward. A resolution by Mayor Ward to appropriate funds. A resolution by Mayor Ward to appropriate funds in the amount of five thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance to the line item, proper burials. Can I get a motion in a second to bring this on the floor?
No, motions, we play our second.
We've had a lot of deaths this year that people are indigent, and we've run out of money in that account. This is more than we actually need, but I thought we would put that in there till the end of the year, just to get us through the year.
Usually about three thousand dollars a year covers it.
We've went through the twenty-seven-hundred dollars, and we have one more, so it shouldn't...
I think there are limits to how much you can pay, or...
We deal with both funeral homes in town, and they keep it pretty close. It's usually about twelve, twelve hundred dollars per burial. Any questions about this resolution? Please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries twelve years.
Thank you. Resolution number seventeen, sponsored by Bigg County Sheriff Kenny Christopher. A resolution by Sheriff Christopher to move funds in the amount of six thousand nine-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents received from various sources to the sheriff's budget. Can I get a motion in a second to bring this on the floor?
Carry cross, motion, Donaldson.
This also didn't get voted on during Law Enforcement or Budget Committee, so look through it. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. If none, please vote.
We've got the nineteen fifty-eight other charges, and that's...
Nineteen fifty-eight, sexual offender registry fee. They all had a big fee at this time of year. They go back to...
Brett, I will say this, this is money that the sheriff's department has received, and that's why it's increasing the revenues on the top line, and it's still increasing the expenditures on the bottom line. If that helps any.
Now, this one, Martin, was in five, five ninety-nine, I guess, we're trying to keep money out of there.
We can ask the sheriff about anything you want to. It wasn't talked about in committee, so I'm sure he's glad to answer your questions.
We go back into that, and I will try to reduce the five. At this point, we'll have to put it back in our budget. It's sexual offender registry, we might have to go back into that.
I think it's coming up to increase expenditures on that five ninety-nine.
Other charges?
Which one did you...
Anyone wish to change their vote?
I'll be some, I'll be some look at the future, like one of these other charges, something might have a spreadsheet or something, break it down.
I think the Budget Committee is working on that this year to try to get rid of most of the four ninety-nines, three ninety-nines, and five ninety-nines at the request of the auditor. So we're trying to put everything in its specific line item. I think you'll have a whole lot better read on what it's going for next year after we get those done. We can't do that in the middle of the year, so maybe we can get all that done with Ms. Brasher during the budget time. It's not just this office, it's every office in the courthouse uses other charges, and three ninety-nine, four ninety-nine, five ninety-nine, and the controllers hit us on that before. We need to specify where that money's going to.
I don't think there's something else on the charges.
No.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
So let's move us to resolution number eighteen, sponsored by Bigg County Sheriff Kenny Christopher. Resolution by Sheriff Kenny Christopher to appropriate funds in the amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance to the sheriff's budget. I believe that this was amended during the Law Enforcement or Budget Meeting. Y'all have a copy of the amendments on this resolution that we passed out just before the meeting. Resolution number eighteen, it actually was amended by Law Enforcement Committee for it to be in one-oh-one dot three-nine-oh-oh-oh unassigned fund balance to decrease that by fifteen thousand and increase the expenditure account, medical claims, one-oh-one-five-four-two-one-oh-dot-five-oh-seven to fifteen thousand. I guess we need a resolution, a motion in a second to amend this if somebody wants to. Phil, Phil, when that's amended in the committee, you still have to amend it in the full court, don't you?
Because you have to bring the resolution up, and then you amend it, and you don't know that's amended.
Yep. So we brought the resolution up, been told how it was amended. I guess that's what we get a motion in a second on, is the amendment.
This is medical claims we owe, we need to pay, right? Fifty thousand.
Are we in arrears on this yet, Sheriff?
No.
We're close.
I believe it's close. It's not overdue, but we got three more months before the end of this budget.
This will take a bit.
Yes.
This will take us in the next month.
Yeah, exactly. Any more discussion? Please vote on the amendment.
Anyone wish to change their vote? As amended, it's twelve years.
We need a motion in a second to pass the resolution.
Carry cross, motion, Marty Douglas, second.
You'll be voting on the resolution as amended. So we have a similar situation on resolution number nineteen. It's a resolution sponsored by the Bigg County Sheriff Kenny Christopher. A resolution by Kenny Christopher to appropriate funds in the amount of ten thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance to the sheriff's budget. I have a note here that this needs to be amended. So the decrease is one-oh-one dot three-nine-oh-oh-oh unassigned fund balance amended to one thousand dollars, and the increase, one-oh-one dot five-four-one-one-oh-dot-five-nine-nine other charges would also be a thousand dollars to make it even. It's amending the previous resolution of ten thousand dollars to be one thousand in each line item. So I would need a motion in a second to amend this resolution, number nineteen.
Motion, Brett Murray, second, Marty Douglas.
So are there questions on this amendment? This was agreed to with the sheriff and the law enforcement and budget committees. No questions, go ahead and vote on the amendment.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Twelve years, as amended.
The amendment carries, so we'll need a motion in a second to vote on resolution number nineteen, sponsored by County Sheriff Kenny Christopher, as amended.
Marty Douglas, motion, Mr. Murray, second.
Any questions on this resolution as amended? Seeing none, let's please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries twelve years.
Before we go any further, since we were on the sheriff's resolutions, I think everything's been addressed, with the exception of food. Talked to him this week. You put enough in there last month to get through the one month. There's not been any money transferred, or... You're down to two hundred dollars in your food account, so we won't be able to pay the bills on the tenth if we don't transfer money from somewhere. If you could see it in one of these resolutions to have them to amend it to help you there, whether you can transfer it or allocate more from the unassigned fund balance. But we talked about that in the Law Enforcement Committee last week, and we've asked y'all about that this week, but hadn't heard anything back. Y'all wanna address it, or you just want me to go and be without money this next month?
I don't feel it.
I think there's a miscommunication between villain companies, the states, or the government.
What was just sent over last week, we're gonna be taking it from the front of the dollar, so if we can get it from the floor, motion to...
You can't, you can't do it from the floor, that's why I was... But I wanted to stop during these resolutions that were amending and see if y'all had money to transfer, but last, last two months, y'all, y'all had to either transfer or put in at least eight thousand dollars. Do you foresee having that many bills this month before next commission meeting?
We have food bills, everyone.
I understand, that's why I'm asking the question. We've addressed it the last two months, but it's not addressed tonight.
I wasn't aware it was that long. When the trucks coming in, when the villain coming in, bills to pay, that's sort of a lack of any communication.
This prior since we're already voting on one of these resolutions.
I don't think you can do that, that's why I stopped on this one. This is the sheriff's resolution, the next one. Y'all may could put something in there, I don't know. All I know is that we can't vote on it in other business without a resolution, so we need to kind of take... I just thought I'd stop for a minute, let everybody think about it and figure out what we need to do.
I guess the question is, do you have any line items that you could transfer money from to pay this one, and then we would have to come up with an unassigned fund balance to replace it at the next meeting?
If, if, if we can transfer money just to get those bills paid and make sure we get by on them, and then put in a resolution that doesn't get all cut up in form of pieces, then yes, we get in there.
That would probably be the best way to handle it, because we can't bring it up under other business, and it has to be in form of a resolution.
Right.
And I'm not sure about trying to amend this particular resolution and bring in money from unassigned fund balance, because it's actually bringing in insurance recovery money. But that would get us through the month, and we could replace it out of unassigned fund balance next one.
I can do a...
With a resolution...
I can do a transfer within your budget without it coming for a vote, as long as it's in a line item where I can transfer it, so we can pay those bills.
We, we can, if we have no questions.
Is that okay with you? Is that okay with you guys, if I just transfer the money as the mayor, as long as, as long as it's not too much money, we can do that, as long as they have it in a line item?
We'll procreate money from unassigned fund balance, go back into those line items.
To cover...
To cover what's been transferred out.
So, so we'll deal with it this month? Thank you. Yeah, I'm good with that, if y'all are... So we'll move on to resolution number twenty, sponsored by the Bigg County Sheriff Kenny Christopher. It's a resolution to budget funds in the amount of six hundred dollars received from insurance recovery to the sheriff's budget. Can I get a motion in a second to bring that on the floor?
Motion, Jerry Cross, second, Bill Melton.
Any questions on this resolution?
When your insurance company, they pay you for a toll win or something?
Yeah, we do. We keep that money, it's bound to be.
I thought we put the pants up, and they'd get a payment.
Or still, we just...
I'm gonna be there.
Please call.
Yes. Please call.
I thought it was, I thought it was...
Any more questions on this resolution? If not, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries twelve years.
All right. Resolution number twenty-one is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of four thousand and sixty dollars and forty cents from the courtroom security line item to the Circuit and Chancery Court budgets. Can I get a motion in a second to bring this on the floor?
Motion, Kenny Kinnison, second, Bill Melton.
We have any questions on this?
Yes. What kind of equipment are they going to buy?
It is to replace the cameras that are messed up, it's not working. We had an incident a couple of weeks ago, and the cameras weren't working, and they called, got a bid on what it's gonna cost to fix them, and that's what it is, so the two offices decided to share it, since they have the upstairs security system. That's why you see it broke down, coming from two different line items. Any other questions? If not, please vote.
Motion carries twelve years. Anyone want to change your vote?
How in the world did we get to the end of the resolutions by 10:07? We need to do a portments of notaries next, is that correct? Looks like we have Melinda Hastings, Cheryl Young, Jody Farmer, Misty Cordell, Margaret Ellen Crafton.
Motion by Kenny, Paulson, second.
All in favor of wanting the notaries? We have any other business?
Anyone want to change your vote?
Anybody have any other business? If not, I'll take a motion in a second to adjourn.
That was because they, they motioned for other business.
Bill Melton wants to leave, and so does Jimmy Kenniston, so all in favor. Thank you, guys. Appreciate everybody. We'll try to get more on your agenda next month.